Oh wow, they changed the instructions. All right, this meeting will be conducted. Well, actually, first of all, welcome everybody to the May twenty second regular meeting of the Town of Eastern Planning and Zoning Board, also known as Greg Strange's one thousand four hundred and forty third uh public and private meeting for the board over seventeen years. Also known as guess I should have got a life, but anyways, didn't plan that. So this meeting will be conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by board members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. The meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you'll need to use the link on the agenda, which is on the calendar, a front page of town's website. Uh during the public testimony portion of the meeting, members of the public can be recognized by using the raise hand function or the Q and A function both found on the Zoom template. If you're joining only by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. But but uh business will be handled at all times indicated on the agenda. Board members are asked to announce themselves. When making a motion and a second so that it'll be clear to the audience and minute takers who made the motion. All votes will be by roll call. So to ensure we have a quorum, we will start off with a roll call. Greg Strange, present, Peter De Shane.
Present.
Mickey Wolf.
Present.
And Robert Stetson.
Present.
All right, and I should also announce um that Mickey is an alternate member, but given uh we uh only have four, she will be participating as a full member tonight and for any further uh hearings that come up tonight. All right, so first up, we have a continued public hearing, three sixty six Center Street Sedano Estates, a definitive subdivision plan. Is anybody representing her?
Yes, I was a little slow in promoting Todd and Mr. Sedino.
Good evening, y'all. Greg, I can't say I remember that meeting seventeen years ago, but um I may have been there.
Yeah, I think I got home late that night because of you asking for waivers.
That sounds about.
So all right, so enough of this friendly banter. Um how about name and address for the record, please?
Uh Todd Pilling, Pilling Land Surveying, one oh five R Depot Street Southeastern.
Great, thank you. All right, the floor is yours, Mr. Pilling.
Okay, last uh meeting I presented, actually, let me share my screen. Um I presented the subdivision that included a proposed way that would go next to south of the existing home at three sixty six Center Street to access a new lot at the rear uh of the property. There was some question last time we had a hammerhead cul-de-sac uh turnaround at the end. And there was question about whether or not that created frontage because they were ninety degree angles. And the answer was that no, we couldn't use it as frontage. So we have changed it to a circular cul-de-sac, but we left the hammerhead turnaround for the fire department for ease of turning around fire trucks. It's also less impervious area than the full cul-de-sac. Uh we also submitted an environmental impact report statement, which I had done and just admitted uploading it, but it's there now. Um and I think everything else we kind of talked about the last meeting, any you want me to go over, just say the word. Thank you.
Uh since I was not here, board members or Stephanie, anything you guys want to discuss?
Um the only comment I'd like to add, I'd like to point out the comments from um the fire chief concerned about the size of the hammerhead and what whether or not um he feels that it will be a tight fit for the fire apparatus and their the potential exists that if this is approved, that if an emergency vehicle was to respond to an emergency at the site, um they may have to drive off pavement during that response and would not be responsible for any damages that were incurred as a result.
But that was for the hammerhead. Right now, there's a it's been changed to a cul-de-sac?
It's a paper cul-de-sac. They're still proposing to pave right.
Oh, I got you. All right.
Hammerhead, which I guess, oh, okay, Peter, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's okay. Go ahead.
Well, I was gonna say, you know, I know things change, people come and go. Um and I I I think back to sort of consistency, you know, and I'm I don't know, I I've never been a big fan. I know some of the board members in the past of of creating paper cul-de-sacs and then not not paving them. And I know a previous two fire chiefs despised hammerheads and we made everybody do cul-de-sacs, you know, now we're or if they had to go off the pavement or if there's a question of pavement was too thin, they would do structured you know, paving those uh you know, sort of cement blocks of the pavers that grass grows through, so you grow the grass. Um so I guess I'm just curious, what do we just change? You know, are we cool with this the way it is? And that's uh we're gonna do it? Are we gonna, you know, uh are we gonna go back to, you know, the next next time the the next fire chief wants it done a certain way? I guess I just get worried about consistency because this does fall in out of or in, you know, the 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 administrative or the subdivision rules, right? So it's like, what uh do we think this is good planning? We're just gonna do it? That's fine. Or just kind of some random thoughts.
Well, I'll just, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think think of like this at the last meeting, it was brought up that when we have approved possibly one or two paper cul-de-sacs over maybe like ten years or something, or maybe just one. Um, you know.
Yeah, it was up there. And I think it was Mr. Pilling, and I thought the board swore they would never do it again.
I've never done a hammerhead before.
There you go.
Either way, yeah, either a paper cul-de-sac.
I'm ready with the paper road, yeah.
So, um.
So my issue, I guess, was that your regulations require thirty foot radius on that pavement. It was like a maximum thirty, and I know the fire trucks are like a thirty-six foot radius for them, so I would need a waiver from your regs to put in the cul-de-sac. So I agree with Mr. Strange. Fire trucks are getting bigger. Fire chiefs changed their mind, planning boards changed their mind. Um and I'm willing to do whatever we need to do to get there. We've got the extra area to make it happen. Um so it's it's not a problem on our end. Uh we're not trying to shoehorn something in. We're just trying to do something that works for the fire department and the applicant.
So a bigger cul-de-sac wouldn't wouldn't um you'd still have enough area for the lot?
Yeah, because this is a forty foot radius circle. And again, your regulations right now are thirty. So if we went with like a thirty-six, it would still fall within that circle.
And who's gonna own own the road? The the owner of lot B?
Yes, it's a perfect uh private way in perpetuity.
Right.
Just like the drainage basin will be maintained by the owner of lot B also.
Well, for what it's worth, and I'll be quiet after this, but my thought is if and I even think of just livability, it's a dead end. So if someone takes the wrong turn, or they have guests over or or fire department. I've watched this. We've made people put in, you know, really big things to for to allow the uh, you know, the operation maneuverability, that's what we want, the fire trucks. Um does it make sense? And I I get we try to eliminate paving, but it wouldn't be that much more. Do we go to a thirty-six foot radius and have them pave it? Or do we think that's overkill?
I think that would be the best plan for a consistent practice going forward from from here.
Yeah, Greg, if if I could make um actually two comments.
Sure.
One, um if if they don't, I mean, if they don't do the full radi- radius on the cul-de-sac, it really is little more than a common driveway. And the other comment is Mr. Pilling answered that one of the lots was going to be held responsible for the right of way. You asked who would own it? And um I I guess that makes sense because the other property isn't served by it.
Because this isn't a common driveway, right? Or?
No, I I mean, you can't use a common driveway for frontage, so that which is why.
But but Lot A is not gonna be used. Is Lot A gonna use this driveway?
No.
Not proposed.
I mean, because then we then we need a different then we need a different application. If that's the case, but I I just assumed that that.
I think I think. Yeah, and I think Stephanie's point is pretty well taken. I mean, if 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 it's not gonna be paved and if it's just gonna have a hammerhead, then it's then it's really nothing more than a glorified driveway, aside common drive. And it's supposed to be a a way. I mean, they're asking for a whole bunch of of waivers, which is fine, but I don't, you know. If we're talking about safety issues, I I tend to agree. I I think that we need some I need I think we need some paving and um and I think that the cul-de-sac and and paving the entire cul-de-sac, even if we're gonna give a waiver for the the full amount makes some sense. So the waivers are over here on the left side of the screen. We're asking for uh three what waivers on the water main and one to get rid of the sidewalk and one to reduce the bounds from forty-two inches to thirty-six inch bounds. So the road construction itself, there's no waivers on.
Uh other.
Well, it's you're getting rid of the sidewalk. Yeah, that's that's the waiver. Yes, the the one waiver from the street construction. Again, the water mains are looping the water main and um what was the other one? The the length of the water main. Um. But yeah.
Uh Stephanie had has the fire department commented on the new um, well, like I said, it's a paper cul-de-sac here, so they haven't commented on that, so.
Well, right, what they commented on was the paved area of the hammerhead did not appear. It appeared very tight. And that if they needed to respond to an emergency, it was likely that they would be driving off pavement and would not be responsible for any damage that was incurred incurred.
And not even considering like a like, you know, during the winter winds, you know, the plows might push a little back to like towards the back, so.
Right, and and if so really, um Todd mentioned the waivers that they're seeking, but they're actually also seeking a waiver of the construction or full construction to the standards for a cul-de-sac as well.
Well, again, this is one of the choices for a cul-de-sac for a dead-end street. You can do a paved cul-de-sac, you can do a landscape ion in the middle, or you can do a hammerhead.
Okay, right, but then then now we have a paper hammerhead, right? I mean, so paper cul-de-sac slash hammerhead. So, you know, it doesn't necessarily exactly, you know, allow that or even any of the waivers in the first place. So we don't have, we can make some reasonable, um, you know, conditions and, um, you know, you know, decisions here.
Yeah, so can I ask you a question? Uh what what's the purpose of the easement? Original plan was twenty-five feet, now it's thirty. Is that because eventually you're thinking of adding another lot to this in the back? Or what technically, what is this?
It is not us that wants the thirty-foot easement. It's the eastern regulations that require a thirty-foot easement for the extension of the street.
And and Greg, if I could add on to that, so I think you were asking for a way in the original waivers, you were asking for a waiver of that twenty-five foot easement or the required standard. And um I made a comment that you have two landlocked parcels undeveloped immediately adjacent. So the parcel that's owned by James McGoldy and then the parcel immediately adjacent to that um are landlocked. And by if the easement is waived, there could be no future, there might be no future development of those sites. So my understanding of those easements at the end of lots like that, at the end of stub um off of a cul-de-sac was to provide the potential for future access to others other lands for development.
Yeah, there's actually two places in your regulations. One requires the thirty for the extension of the road, the other is twenty-five for utility looping for the future. And we had done the twenty-five for looping utilities, um and we upped it to the thirty for extension of the road.
Okay, thank you. So it sounds like everybody's kind of on board with paving the cul-de-sac, right? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that's for me. Same.
Yes.
Um, okay, so um are there any other? Should we just uh continue this to the next meeting? Any other questions or comments from anybody? Or I I have to obviously reach out to the audience.
So maybe we just check with the fire department about the, you know, the minimum radius uh for the an actual cul to turn an actual cul-de-sac. And then maybe then we could um, you know, communicate that with the applicant and they could revise their plans for the next meeting.
I'm okay with that, must uh but I'd like to know if there's anything else, obviously, um because I don't want to waste your time either coming back again. So anything else that anybody wanted to see?
Uh Greg, I just have one other comment.
Go right ahead.
If the board does issue a decision, um the decision should include a condition that the um the deed for the new parcel include responsibility for maintenance and repair of Sedino Way.
Yeah, that's understood, so.
Is there anyone in the audience? Um any questions or comments?
And that's Sedano Way and the drainage basin also.
Yeah.
Um, anybody has nothing to add if we want to make a motion to continue to the next meeting?
Motion to continue to the next meeting, De Shane.
Second, Stetson.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, Greg Strange, I, Robert Stetson.
Hi.
Peter De Shane.
Hi.
And Mickey Wolf.
Hi.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Pilling.
I thank you. Good night, and um thank you for your long career, Mr. Strange.
Is that what we're calling it?
A career, yes.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Let's see, next up, uh, why did I lose? I won't miss these online agendas, let's see. All right, next up, we have continued site plan review, six sixty-one Washington Street.
Greg, I am very sorry. Before we continue, I think the butter to the Sedina Way project had his hand up. I did not see that.
There was no hand up when I did the second.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, that's I mean, if you wanna quickly, uh you wanna call it up?
Yeah, do you want me to?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can. Name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is James McGoldy and I'm one of the butters. And I just uh have been thinking about this for the last couple of weeks since the previous meeting. And I just don't understand how I I believe Mr. Pill Thing had mentioned it. He had done testing, soil testing all over that site and that there was absolutely no ledge. I mean, there is so much ledge in this back backland, it isn't funny. I put a swimming pool in, you know, like fifty years ago practically, and uh they had to bring in a larger steam shovel and smash through all the ledge to do the swimming pool in my backyard. And I gotta believe with all the ledge in that land, when we get a really heavy rainstorm uh are in a dr- you know, a lot of these testings were done uh in a pretty heavy drought area last year. I think it was in September of twenty twenty-two. So I just publicly want to state that I believe that there is a lot of water runoff. I don't think that retention pond up on the road on the far side of that lot uh i- i- is gonna be able to do much and that the water is gonna flow back down this way. And as I mentioned, uh back in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-one, when we bought this place and in the spring of seventy-two, I ended up with a pond in my backyard. And I mean a pond that was at least at least three, maybe more, feet deep and practically came up to the back of my garage. And there was no way to get that water out of there. And that's when the planning board chairman, Ed McCadham, I believe, was his name, eventually approved putting storm drains on Lantern Lane so that uh I could uh dig a trench at least from that pond to the storm drain. And eventually, as I mentioned last time, we put in, we had to put in a four-inch orangeberg pipe to drain that pond to keep it drained. And without that orangeberg pipe, I'd have that hundred foot or wider pond in my backyard every spring. It just never would never fail. So I'm concerned about the the land and the the wetness, and I'm absolutely against putting any another house on that lot. I'm just against it, and that's my feeling. And uh I appreciate you allowing me to make uh my comment and uh that's pretty much it for now.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. I appreciate your your taking the time and your comment. And uh the next meeting in two weeks, uh this will be coming up again. Stephanie, do you have anything you wanna respond to? So I think your point's taken and and I'd rather um have that conversation when the applicant's back here, and that's a better way to have a conversation than in the absence. So that good with everybody? All right. I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so next up, let's um six sixty-one Washington Street. Mr. Ferrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What's the good news? We're gonna bring this baby home tonight or what?
Well, unfortunately, I don't get to vote on these things, Mr. Chairman. It would have been done two months ago if I got to vote.
Yeah, they even got us available. Who are you kidding? Come on.
Yeah, that's right.
I never believe an engineer says they just do it on a napkin.
That's right, like the good old days. Uh I have uh Adam Silverleap, there's Adam, and Attorney Marioni is on as well. Uh here for six sixty-one Washington Street, as you said, Silco Volkswagen uh at our previous hearing in it, if you would like, I'm gonna share a screen.
Go right ahead. There's the esteemed Councilor Marioni.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, young man.
All right. Do people see my screen?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful.
Well, at least I can.
That's all that matters.
You've really become tech savvy over the course of this project. You did it in under twenty minutes.
In all honesty, Mr. Chairman, my tech savvy son is right next to me.
I was gonna say, what are your kids doing?
On camera view.
You didn't, you know what? Your your secret would have been safe.
I know, I know, but you know, I I can't, I can't tell a lie. I can't.
Would have set a tough standard if your son wasn't around for all of your meetings, I guess.
Exactly. Oh, boy. All right, so uh beyond all that, we had uh our uh original hearing with you folks uh back maybe about six weeks ago. And uh we had some comments back and forth, and I think our biggest issue uh that we wanted to resolve with the board uh was some screening along the residential properties on Depot Street and the need to have a site walk uh to look at that proposed screening. Uh at that point, as you recall, we had our site walk. Uh we looked at the property, we decided, and I've shown it on this plan uh to increase the plantings in the areas where we have plantings. And in between the plantings, we are proposing an eight-foot stockade fence as opposed to a six-foot stockade fence uh just to screen the property. So we're we're screening the uh the entire side uh right here at number one twenty-five and then across the back and along the side uh for house number one twenty-nine. Now, one twenty-nine is way up on Depot Street, but they do have a large uh grass area, so we did want to screen most of their property uh from seeing the the Volkswagen dealership. In addition to that, as discussed, we did propose a uh an eight-foot fence alongside the uh the daycare center uh on Washington Street. So.
Scott, can I just interrupt you real quick? Just just while you're talking the fence. So for example, on the western um but bottom of the screen, so is that fence going along that entire property line or just where you show it?
The fence, we're ending it right here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The rest will be grass and then more trees around the corner uh to shield the uh the condominium project on the side.
Sure, okay, thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh so we feel like we resolved those issues. Uh the other obviously big issue that we had was dealing with the uh planning board's consultant uh on the project. We've gone back and forth with Mr. Mr. Cheshire on the uh primarily on the drainage. And uh at this point, we have a uh a letter from him uh basically giving us a blessing. There's there's a few conditions in there uh that he suggested we make them as conditions of approval, mostly having to do with some uh test pits that would be dug during construction, which is kind of a a standard thing nowadays, just to make sure when they're actually installing the drainage uh that the soil we are putting the system in is is the same that we uh that we attested to on the plans and and that we are expecting to see, just to make sure that the the system works properly. So uh those were his conditions. Uh as I said, we're in agreement with all of the conditions that he had listed. Uh the planning staff had a few uh a few comments. Uh one was about lighting. We did submit a revised lighting plan, which hopefully addresses those comments. Uh the stockade fence, we talked about. One other issue, I guess, that we should mention was it was discussed at our first uh public hearing that perhaps a school bus stop could be proposed on our property on Depot Street to uh help the the four or five residences right in the uh in the general neighborhood. And it's just the Adam uh Silverleaf did speak to his insurance agent about it, and it's it's just something that uh that we can't do on our property. We just can't build a a school bus stop on our property uh for liability reasons. So unfortunately, we're uh we're just not gonna be able to to help out on on that issue.
Can you give them any free cars?
Um, I, if it was me, I would say, yes, we could do that. But I'm not sure.
Depends on the scale of the car, Mr. Chairman.
Matchbox cars, probably. Uh so I think that was that was really it, Mr. Chairman. That was uh the majority of the comments, I think, from the board from the consultant and from the planning staff. So if there's any other questions, I'd love to answer them.
Um Stephanie, you have anything?
No, no, they've answered all my questions.
So a quick question before I turn to the board. So when when we did that site walk, I had pitched the idea of the eight-foot fence because given the uh existing topography, um and so do you notice that when they go to do, I I I recommend that put it on the plan. I know six foot is the maximum in town. And then eight, in the old days, I don't even know how Kevin does. In the old days, it used to be sort of a special permit. You wanna go, is that, does that gets, does this plan, if we approve this with eight-foot fence, does that supersede or does do they still have to do that?
I believe they still need that. I I I believe it's part of the um I I wanna say building code. I I don't know that it's the building code, but I do think that they need to review and approve a fence over six feet tall.
So we can put it in a, well, we don't have a decision. This is just a okay. Um well, just a heads up, you may have to talk to.
Understood.
Yeah, we could like specifically approve the eight-foot fences part of this site plan, and that might help the process along.
Right, I exactly. I think that the the board approving the plan with the eight-foot fence.
Right. And even note the eight-foot fence in the decision or something, right? Well, require it that way. If we require the eight-foot fence in those locations, then it's pretty clear that, you know.
Agreed.
Now, what about um what about Greg's um mile marker monument um there? Is that in the corner there still?
It's on um it's on the butter's land. Uh so I did, I reached out to a couple um members of the historical society and historical commission and said that they wanted to try to talk to the neighbors or whatever, explain it and see if you could do something. But you know, the the uh, I think that's probably just gonna stay where it is.
Okay, could we um is it okay time to look at the photometric plan, the revised photometric?
Sure. It's the drainage plan. Unfortunately, Mr. De Shane, I don't believe I have it as part of my plan site.
I have it.
Okay.
I believe it came in because my report indicated you hadn't provided the lighting detail on it. I think it.
It was actually a separate file because I clicked on that one first and I was looking at it.
If you wanna, if you wanna stop sharing your screen for a moment, Scott, I can bring mine up.
Widely, thank you. Sorry about that, folks.
No, it's uh from four twenty-eight twenty-three. Right there it is.
Can you see it?
Yep, yes. So what were the major changes that you made to this lighting plan?
Uh, the changes we had to add uh we had to add a few lights to come into compliance with the maximum two hundred fifty watts. Uh I believe the the previous plan we had, I I believe it had a thousand watts. Uh so by shrinking it down to the two fifty, we had to add a few. Shrinking it down to the two fifty, we had to add a few uh, a few light structures, so that's what we've done. Uh, it still has the same dark sky compliant. Specifications that that are always part of the regulations and also show that there's no light uh, being shed on the abutting properties.
Okay, and then either this um, page of the plan or the um. The regular plan set indicate that the lights will be dark sky compliant? Or they they will by the time we uh, have plans that we were to sign something?
I'll specifically add it to my utility plan, yes. I believe it was part of his specs, but not on the plan, so I'll make sure I get some plan.
Okay, those are all my questions.
Thank you.
Any other board members, questions or comments? Uh, anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? And so Stephanie, I wait to see if anybody chimes in. Um, in terms of what Mister Ferrier was discussing um. Conditions for approval brought up by peer review. Uh, and then a couple of small things, are we? Seems like we're fine if everyone made a motion to approve this and that that information could come in. Later.
On the do, right, on later end as part of the decision. These are pretty standard stormwater um, conditions.
Right. All right, well. Anybody care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the site plan at six sixty one Washington Street, Stetson.
Second, Wolf.
Any further discussion? And I'm not losing my site plan review, so there really won't be a decision.
We, no, decisions are issued for site plan.
Guess I never saw him in seventeen years. All right, um, we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, Strange Eye, Stetson.
Hi.
DeShane.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
That's it, so many people on the screen, but that's it, all right, well, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Adam, I look forward to seeing that retro VW up in the mezzanine.
You will uh, it will be easily accessible. We'll 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 do a photo shoot with you in it.
Oh. Make sure the cars. Let's make sure we crop that a little bit, you know, we can bring it in. You know, this is, I I do wanna say one thing that this, you know, we, this board will have a long history with this site, going back like five or six years. And it looks pretty dire um. In the last year or two, you know, Stephanie knows her and I had met with all sorts of people, also, you know, trying to. Trying to um, save what had been proposed, but you know what, it's nice, this is gonna be a great shot in the arm. Um, for that part of town, so I thank you for investing um. And this really is going to, that's a part of town is sort of no man's land, it has lots of little lots in there, but wetlands, we all know what that means in Easton, but. Um, I I feel still, it'll be nice to uh. It will, it will embolden embolden some of the butters, I think, to invest in their property and uh, get. Really improve what's become kind of a blighted part of town. And you know me, I'm all for the aesthetic, so I appreciate your investment and uh. I look forward to seeing you up the road, so good luck.
We we feel very fortunate to be stewards of this property and to be part of the. Um, you know, we'll call it the the re reboot of that section of. So thank.
Amen, all right, great.
Operation.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, good luck with your uh, retirement.
I don't know, I don't know if my uh, lovely Bible, let me call it that, but.
Have a good night.
It'll be fun to have my life back, I do, I do look forward to that, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good luck. All right, um. Six sixty one, so, all right, next, we received a request to continue to June twelfth. Of twenty twenty three from five eighteen Washington Street Site Plan Review for Homegrown Engineering Congregational. Congregation of the Holy Cross, anybody care to make that motion?
Motion to continue um. Five eighteen Washington Street to June twelfth.
Second, Stetson.
Um, any further discussion, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, Strange Eye, Wolf.
Hi.
DeShane.
Hi.
Stetson.
Hi.
Right, thank you. All right, um. Let's go in quick, I guess I'll do this public hearing, I have some, all right, five thirty seven, public hearing, five thirty seven Turnpike Street, Special Permit Duplex twenty three dash. Three oh one. Peter, I assume you wanna read us in?
Um, yes, sir. Town of Easton knows of public hearing, in accordance with the provisions of. Chapter forty eight, section nine, section eleven, MGL, and the Eastern Planning. And zoning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May twenty second, two thousand twenty three at six thirty PM to be held. Remotely on the application received from PMP Consulting Inc. On behalf of. Yang Li for a special permit duplex dwelling under Eastern Town Code. Chapter two thirty five, zoning two thirty five dash fifty six, special permits. To allow the creation of a duplex dwelling located at five thirty seven Turnpike Street, Eastern Massachusetts. Assessors map fifty five U lot twelve. This meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom, the virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least forty eight hours. In advance of the meeting, a copy of the application and plan may be viewed on the town website. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Greg Strange Chair.
Wonderfully done, Peter, thank you, all right. So Stephanie, have we called up whoever's coming up?
Yes, um, Ed Jacobs. Is speaking, but.
All right, well, Mr. Jacob, just name an address for the record, please, and the floor is yours.
Edward Jacobs, PMP Consulting, Inc., two hundred North Bedford Street, East Bridgewater.
Um, Ed, could I just ask a question? Do you have the applicant with you? There's a Sarah with her hand raised. Is that?
Um, it should be Miss Lee, is there ever Miss Lee here? Hung Lee.
Okay.
No. Okay. Um, Chairman, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As I said, my name's Ed Jacobs, and I'm here representing Miss Lee for a special permit application. Who um. Could I share my screen and then we can uh, see what I'm talking about here? Can you see that?
Maybe zooming a little bit on that, please.
Is that better? Can you see the screen?
Yeah, that that is more, yeah, that's clear enough.
Okay. So this is five thirty seven um, Turnpike Street on the west side of the road. Uh, which is Route one thirty eight, it's just um, it has a um, existing. Um, house in disrepair, a single family home and an existing um, detached garage, it's also in disrepair. Um, those total um. About. Twenty two hundred and forty four square feet. Um, those are both being raised uh, to make way for this um, proposed duplex. The lot is um, forty one thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet. It has a hundred and seventy seven point six five feet of frontage. We are requesting to um, as I said, raise those houses and put up this duplex. Each unit will be forty feet wide, thirty two feet deep. Uh, for a total footprint of twenty five hundred and sixty square feet. Each unit will have a two car garage in the basement, at basement level. Um, two new driveways are being proposed off of Route one thirty eight. Uh, right now, we're showing those at twenty two foot wide. Um, we had comments back from um, Ms. Danielson to um. Narrow those down at. Um, at the roadway at one thirty eight to twelve foot wide, which we have no problem with. And if you look at the north driveway, right here, there's two trees that would have to come out. And Ms. Danielson also uh, requested that we, and taking down those two trees, we replace those. Um, somewhere else on the street line, and we have no problem doing that as well. Um. And as I said, we've got two driveways, uh, it's um. Garage is a driveway uh, at um. Basement floor level, we have a septic system in the back, we have room for the uh, reserve off to the side. And associated grading. And that's pretty much the uh, project, as I said, it's on the west side of. Um. Turnpike Street, it's surrounded by condos to the north and into the rear, and it has a four. Unit apartment building uh, just to the south of it. And um, I'll just entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, uh, board members, questions?
Um, is the grading indicated on the plan, is that the extent of the grading on the? Entire lot or will the septic system most likely, um, or you haven't done any any septic, um, you know. So I don't know how that.
Yeah, well, we've done, we've done percolation testing. Um, and whether they um, are going to be mounted systems and I don't know that at this time.
Okay, and um, you don't have any? Do you have like, well, we can look at it later, but do you have like a, any like proposed like house plans yet, or is the site plan? On what you have.
Yeah, they're in, they're in the file.
Oh, they are in the folder, okay, I did.
Yep, I can um. I can put those up if you'd like, but.
Yeah, but what is the rest of the board thinking about, like the the two driveways or possibly like one driveway with kind of two connections to the two units?
Well, I'd like to take it back for a second, Peter, if you don't mind, um, and I'm just wondering, um, and now I'm putting my. Historical commission hat on. Um, but this house um. Is, uh, obviously has to go through demo delay, I I don't know, I I don't think there's been any conversations with. Historical yet, uh, and it's actually, it's it's listed in the uh, the Mass Historical Society inventory. Um, as being. Um, eligible for um, for preservation, so I'm just wondering, I guess, kinda concerned. Given how things work now, um, and the folks that have seen this, why this hasn't come? I I I would like to have seen this go to planning, I'm planning to to historical first to talk about. Um, this house, I know, yeah, maybe it's in disrepair, that's not always how it's viewed by uh. Um, by historic members, and this has been a part of town that have been looking to save things in. So I'm just wondering, and typically, the practice has been, we've gotten some feedback from historical. Uh, prior to approving a project that's gonna take it, that's gonna demolish. You know, kind of, cause otherwise, we're not really allowing them to have their uh. Their statutory say.
Right, I get it.
Greg, and if I could just again add to that, in fact, this is listed as the original toll house. For Turnpike Street.
Yes, the Taunton South Boston Turnpike Toll House. Built in eighteen oh seven, and it has the Macris sheet right there, but it is, um. So, you know, in the past, wouldn't it be nice to save the historic house and maybe attach a historic look to it or something, or but. Or or just save it as it is, or if it has to, whatever this board decides, but I think it's. I think it's wrong if we don't at least hear from historic on this, cause why why else have the system set up to operate like that if it's not gonna operate like that?
Okay.
Uh, but board members, what do you, this is my last night, so what what do you?
That sounds like a great idea to me. Okay.
I'd agree.
And I'm sorry, you know, uh, and I'm sorry that this hasn't happened ahead of time, I wish you that, you know, I don't, we don't try to hold things up, um, but I think it's uh. I do think it's an important step to at least have a conversation with them, and I, you know, I spoke with the. The Chair of the Historical Commission uh, a couple of days ago about, and he, yeah, he hadn't uh, he hadn't heard anything about it, so. Um, might not be a bad idea, given like, reach out.
Okay, I don't have a problem doing that. So is the next step, we continue this, or what do we do?
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Or do you want, should we put on hold, do we hear from them? Continue?
So Greg, because it's a special permit, um, I I don't know. How soon Mr. Jacobs can get before the Historical Commission, but I would suggest. Continuing to a date certain, even if it needs to be continued, just so that. We don't have to have the applicant read notice and do another rule notice.
So you wanna continue it out two weeks, or I mean, two meetings, or how do you want, or one meeting, whatever you guys want?
I think probably two meetings, if you don't mind.
Sure.
That'll give me time to uh. To reach out to them and. You know, uh.
Do we have the date? Everybody have that date?
Two meetings would be January, I'm I'm sorry, June twenty sixth.
Give me Stephanie.
June twenty sixth.
Okay.
So, motion to continue to have June twenty sixth.
Second, Stetson.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Strange Eye, Mickey Wolf.
Hi.
Peter DeShane.
Hi.
Robert Stetson.
Hi.
Great.
Okay, thank you very much, your time, thank you.
A and R six forty six, six 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 Washington Street, J K. Homegrown Engineering.
I don't see Scott. It looks like he jumped off.
So let's deny it.
Um, but the board can't deny an A and R.
Uh, stick with the rules.
But I mean, certainly the.
Yeah, we can handle, yeah, we don't. Questions, comments on the A and R, anybody? Looks pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
What are the ideas for this, if there are, are there any ideas for this, or they just doing for the um? To.
I've heard nothing.
I've I've heard nothing.
All right, so right now, lot, while the, we'll say what is going to be lot A extends farther over to kind of the edge of the um, closer to the. To the gas pumps?
Yeah, sure, let me, let me share my screen and I can show that.
So lot A is um, being enlarged and.
Yeah. Um, right, this is the previous lot line, so it looks like it shared it with the. With the gas station lot.
But then lot B still um, has sufficient um.
Yeah.
And era.
Yeah, I think it was one lot to begin with, right?
Oh.
I thought it, yeah, I thought it was one lot, but there is, you can see right here, there's a previous lot.
There's that dash line over there.
Right, so. Really, it it looks like it's dividing them off into two lots, which would. Mean it would become more conforming.
Oh, no, I actually know the previous lot line is going through the building.
Right.
Yeah. That's what you mean. Oh, so maybe that, maybe the other one's another previous lot line or or just indicating.
So I, I, yeah, it looks like what it's doing is making each lot more conforming.
All right, yeah, at least it's like separating the two, so they're not kind of, so the existing. So that the Angel is building as an on two properties, something like that.
Right.
We don't have any.
I I don't think I had any other comments on that, Greg.
Okay, motion, anyone?
Motion to endorse the A and R plan as presented.
Second, Stetson.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, Strange Eye, Peter DeShane.
Hi.
Robert Stetson.
Hi.
Mickey Wolf.
Hi.
All right. That passes that, and let's see, where are we at here?
Five sixty foundry.
Five sixty foundry, yeah, you know what, I'll stay, this will be good for me to defend, this this will be my last. Meeting I ever do. No, 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 no.
I I didn't know you would miss that for your life, you know, after all, after all your work on that.
Three years of waiting, I I didn't have any fingernails left.
Good evening.
Mister Lincoln, name and address for the record, please.
Lincoln, four first street, Bridgewater.
Welcome. And looking at this intimidating file size from the project, I'm not even gonna try to find anything. Um, what are you here for? Final final review of architecturals, right on the houses, is that what we're doing?
Yes. Yeah, architectural review.
Okay. Everybody in. Okay, everybody in there, I know they're under building envelope designs, everybody take a peek at them? Pretty much everything we kind of preliminary reviewed along the way, right? Approved, I should say, but Mr. Lincoln being the. Diligent person that he is to work with has come in and wanted to have us have one last peek, now that his construction documents are. Completes.
Greg, I don't know if Rick's prepared to share his screen, but if not, I can share mine.
I was hoping you would offer that, Stephanie. Not good with that, sorry.
So would you like me to do that, Greg?
Um yeah, so what are they, what are they, they say like the um like the siding and the um and the trim materials that you? That you have for most of your structures here?
So we haven't decided, so it's um AZAC trim. You know, fascia and corner boards and things like that.
Like the fake wood trim.
It's like a PVC.
Okay.
Yeah, there there is a vinyl, you know, which is a step down for sure.
Yep, it looks like a piece of wood, but it's made out of vinyl.
Exactly, yeah, it's actually more expensive than than pine.
Oh, yeah.
Um and the fronts, the front elevations um. That the worst case would be like a cedar impressions, which is, which is a vinyl shape, uh shingle look. Uh what I think I'm I'm leaning towards is a um. It's a, there's a new product out in the last few years, and it's it's a individual. Uh it's like a single shake shingle, which is like a solid composite. Um it's actually quite expensive, but as you can see, the front elevations on these. Houses, uh there's not a lot of square footage, and I think it would make a. A dramatic im- impact, I don't know if you've seen that product, Greg, it's. See, certainty, certainty makes it, I think it's called.
Yeah, I'm actually using it right now in a a project in Melrose, and yeah, it's really nice, it's it's expensive, but everything.
Yeah, it's expensive, yeah, you don't wanna do the whole house with it, so the sides would be like a a heavy, like a, what they call a point oh four four. A little heavier than oh four two vinyl clapboard, uh and the rear would be that also. Um. Uh the decking is all like a, like AZAC uh white vinyl, you know, posts and rails, and uh the decking is AZAC. And of course, the substructure is, you know, pressure treated. Um like a thirty year, you know, maybe a forty year roof shingle. Um. Typically, I'll go in and try and master plan and pick all the colors, I think I'm gonna avoid that on this one, let people uh make their selections. But, you know, final approval, um so they're not, nothing crazy goes in. Uh but I kind of like stuff mixed up, I, you know, I don't know how the board feels about that, but I, you know, we've all seen. Developments where it's like either all gray or all earth tones, and I just like, I, you know, personally, I think that's kind of boring, but. Um again, I, you know, we don't, don't want any crazy colors, but I I don't think I wanna discourage like dark colors either.
So you act, so you actually kind of, so you're the, you're building the homes, but then like the the. The buyer can choose, like what what can they choose, like the color or like, can they, they could change the materials if they? If they wanted, you know. Yeah, to an extent, is that?
To an, yeah, to an extent, yeah, you know, you don't wanna vary it too, but colors for sure, um. But for instance, looking at this elevation, I for, I I wouldn't be opposed if somebody wanted to uh. Upgrade to, for instance, like a black wrought iron, you know, across the deck, wouldn't be a huge upgrade, but I think that would be a real pretty look. Um but I I don't think we want anybody doing, uh you know, for instance, any natural wood, most people shy away, you don't really get. I don't get requests like that anymore anyways, most people are kind of like low maintenance. Um. The windows have all been selected, um there may be some folks that wanna go with the black. Uh muttons, which I did on that uh that Easton Dale Cottage development, I don't think I'd be opposed to that, I don't, I think it would uh. The variety would look fine. Um but right now, it's specked out as white.
Yep, and the windows would have what what I'm calling, since I don't know the exact term, like the um. The the fake window panes or whatever, whatever those are called, um is that like, is that part of like the concept, or is that just like, like the buyer's choice or what?
It that, the windows would be grills between the glass, we call them.
Yep.
Uh the ones I did across the street on Foundry, we we actual, we actually spent a lot of money, that's called simulated divided light.
Okay, right.
Where you actually have hard grills on the outside, the inside, that that gets really expensive. Um but, you know, Foundry Street was um high profile. Yeah, there's.
It was historic.
History, yes. So there's an elevation right there, um where it's got the the black um windows, you know, with the white, white casing. And I I, you know, I think that looks nice.
That's cool. But yeah, see the the clubhouse, is that like an actual, is the clubhouse rendering like actually like? Something like what it would look like with a chimney and the um the. The cupola type thing at the top?
I know that's in here.
Yeah, there was a separate.
We did include that.
It's in there, should be in there somewhere.
Hold on, I'm trying to get there, there were quite a few.
Yeah, I save the best for last.
Right, yeah, cuz that's kind of like out front, right, that's one of the more prominent um.
Correct, right. Yeah, and just as you're scrolling down. Now, there it is, yeah.
Zoom in on that.
No, yeah, I was on.
And what kind of trees are those?
Red maples.
I think the artist, artist took some liberty liberties, yeah, no, it looks nice, but that that's. Honestly, that's a rendering of the landscape architectural plan, but might take a few years to get to that point.
And there aren't going to be any uh power lines, right, or are those on Foundry Street?
Unfortunately, they will be there.
Can I ask a question, since this is my last meeting, but I I heard something that kind of troubled me, so I'll I'll just say this to the board and or. Or Stephanie or Rick, you can correct me, but but I had heard that there is. Um a delay in reviewing the intersection, the design outside with the light. And that it might not be ready. And that lights might not be installed by the time there's occupancy, so I think back to, so is is that correct, first of all, did I hear right?
That's. I think that's incorrect, um. The town, I think, is, so we've submitted, you know, we had draft plans in for a long time. Uh we've since submitted, we being my uh my traffic engineer, we've since submitted. Our version of final plans, and I think that the town's peer review engineer is gonna take one last look at it. Um my folks don't see any changes, uh you know, or small changes, I mean. So if we do get it back relatively soon, um it might be up to DPW as to they, as the weather they wanna see it in this fall. But I hope they do, because I'd like to, like to try and get that light in as soon as possible, uh I have sent. The road construction out to two firms, and and both of, one is the the site contract. Site contractor I have onsite, so um I know I can have a site contractor ready, I did send the. Traffic light out to Bell Traffic for the third time, you know, cuz we've had this one going for a long time, and they're just kind of revising their bid from a price standpoint. But they've suggested that they don't, they won't have any delays. Um. That most of the construction on the road widening, I'll call it, is fairly simple, it's all just being a, you know, it's widened. In our property that is now uh an easement owned by the town. Um there is a little bit of drainage, I saw on the plans, you know, so that that takes a little more time, but. I'm talking like four or five catch paces, not not a lot. And then uh my paver is all lined up in the fall, T L Edwards, so. Uh it can happen, but I I don't have the final approval yet.
Okay, so I know, cuz the other reason I ask, um and I I'll say this to the board, and I'll I'll say this to Stephanie as the Director of Planning. You know, way back when we first looked at this project, e- even before uh Mr. Lincoln was involved, we're like, okay, and you know. We couldn't really approve anything without a light there, we knew how tricky it was, um so when I heard that there may be a delay, I was like, well, you know. And there's gonna be, if if, I'm just saying, if a situation arises where there's occupancy of units prior to that being done. I would hope a- as a citizen who lives in this area and worried about the safety, I would hope that. Maybe the board would have the ability to to maybe say it should be a right turn only coming out of there till the lights are on, cuz it's just gonna be a nightmare. Uh it's gonna be really dangerous too, so ho- hopefully, the people that are, that have the review of things can can get it done so that. Uh Mr. Lincoln can do his stuff, but if if not, I just hope you guys, again, I'm just saying this as a citizen, I hope you look at it and.
Yeah, so Greg, I've not, I've not heard that there's a delay at all, I know that in fact. Um Greg Swan was pushing to get the peer review funded, which has been done, and um. The reviewer was on board as soon as we said, gave them the go ahead, which has already occurred. I can follow up, I'm, I don't know where you heard that, and I'm wondering if someone is. Conflating that with the bigger, longer term project for Foundry Street, but again.
No, there wasn't, it was this, it was, I heard it inside Town Hall, no, nobody, I just came up in conversation.
Yeah.
And I just, I just wanted to bring it up and say, if that happens, look, I understand things happen, right? Um but I I just think we should, you know, allowing left turns out of there without a light is gonna be a nightmare.
Yeah, that ma- that makes sense, so I'm making a note of that too.
Alright.
About having a right turn signal if it does get delayed.
So how, you guys all good with these plans? Any questions, comments, looks like he's done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, on the, on the clubhouse, um, I would say the clubhouse and the other buildings, like. Is like the, any like the air conditioning or like a heat pump, that would all be like ground level, like an exterior type. Just like plot on top of the roof, or?
Yeah, it won't be on the roof, um hopefully, at least on the clubhouse, we can hide it, you know, there's a, there's enough vegetation, and it would be one. Heat pump. Um on the houses, right now, I'm thinking about going a hundred percent geothermal, so you wouldn't see anything, you know, they're just, they're just wells in the ground. Um closed loop wells, I should add, uh so um. I, again, on the clubhouse, it would be just one heat pump, so not not a lot of square footage there inside.
New build, the new building code gotcha.
Not yet, but it will. Uh i- if you don't mind, just let me back up on the light one more time, yeah, um it may be an oversimpli-. Simplification, but one of my thoughts was, I'd have to talk to the traffic signal guys, is it's kind of a a string system. Um with with the uh posts, uh cuz I think something more permanent is coming down, you know, the road with the uh. You know, with the full blown project someday, uh I kind of wondered, um and I will ask the question if. There's any kind of delay on site work or drainage in the road, or whether whether we could string the uh system up. And get the light up, even though we're not done in the road, so at least there's a light there. Uh you won't have turn lanes, you know, with if the paving isn't done, but you know, that's. Um we could potentially do that, but I again, I'd have to ask the the traffic guys and the uh and the traffic signal folks.
Right, but you've been in contact with that, you know, the the town departments, right, and it's in your best interest, obviously, that. To have a safe and um effective, you know, egress from your property, right, so so that's something that's kind of on the top of your mind, I I assume where. You could um at least um from your end, kind of keep that moving along, or make sure it's safe for you.
Yes, sir.
You guys, yeah.
Alright, so um any more question, I see we have one thing in the audience, any questions or comments before I go to the? General public? Okay, um Stephanie, you wanna call up uh Maria Wilson? Please, and thank you. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Maria Wilson sixteen Cell Street, I just wanted to um. Talk about the lights a little bit further and to make sure, cuz we were told last year that they were gonna go in the spring of this year. And traffic is really backing up onto the Quonixit, and anything that anyone can do to move that along would be greatly appreciated. Or if we need to send emails to help move it along, that would be great, I mean, I'm happy to do that as well, but um. We really do need a light there sooner rather than later. That's my only comment.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie, anything? I can, as a fellow resident of that area.
Yeah, I in in I, I agree, and as I said, it was, I have not heard that there will be a delay, so that's. On my list, I've already noted it to follow up and find out.
I would say, sure, I would email uh. Email, sorry, Stephanie, the the planning department, all you want on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will, I'll be a citizen in about two minutes, I'll start doing the same thing, so we definitely need that.
Yeah, that's. I will definitely find out what's going on.
Great, okay, um any uh quick, any other questions, comments, if not, I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve the architectural drawings. Stetson.
Uh we have a second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, Greg Strange Eye, Mickey Wolf?
Hi.
Peter DeShane?
Hi.
And Robert Stetson?
Hi.
Alright, it passes, Mr. Will, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lincoln, thank you, it's been a pleasure. Good luck.
Congratulations, and thanks for everybody's time.
Alright, get that light up.
I'm gonna try.
Alright. Um alright, so I'll keep this quick, this is Greg Strange, so after seventeen years, um. I have decided to resign from planning board, um I'll explain it more in my letter to the Board of Selectmen, this is not. Oh, on on the side note, in case folks didn't know, our zoning amendment that we proposed this year, we had two typos that we had. That the zoning amendment changing the quantities of apartment housing, that was um. Shot down at town meeting, the the selectman, I met that night on it, they voted against it, and I know I, so I I actually left that night. And um the reason I, um and it was, it went down to a counted vote, but I I guess it missed by about seventeen votes. I know a lot of people in town are upset about it, have been calling me endlessly, but uh they'll, you know, is what it is, um. You know, so when I, when I um accepted my. Fifth, my fourth five year term last year, I didn't think I'd be not seeing it to its end, um you know, but unfortunately. Um as the Chair of the Planning Board, more and more, I was just excluded um from things that. Appointed citizens and those who lead them have have been included in the past, um and I made my case known to the powers that be. I tried many approaches, I tried the delicate approach, I, and on the other, I tried the hammer approach, um to no, to no avail, so. Um as Kenny Rogers saying many years ago, you you gotta know when to fold them, um I love this town, I'll always stay. Interested in it and evolved, but it's time to, it's time to step back, um and like, I wasn't kidding you, but I did over fourteen hundred meetings. Cuz you know, I log all my time for billables, and uh um I'm really proud of the work. Um the thirteen years I've been chair, and seventeen years on the board that we've done, we've written some really um. Creative zoning, uh we we were the first ones to get affordable housing payments for small A affordable, we brought in architectural review. Uh worked with. Six town planners, um and many, you know, board selectmen and 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 many board members, so I wanna thank the citizens. Who indulged me all these years, um please don't show up at my door anymore unannounced, cuz I'm uh I'm officially unplugged. Um but if you ever have a question, you can always reach me, and um to all the board, I think we had something like sixty two board members in all these years, so. It's been, it's been great, I love this town, and um I'll uh. I'm I'm sure I'll see you cats around, Mickey, keep up the good work with historical, and also I'm taking a break from everything, I need to get away, so. Um I thank everybody, Stephanie, thanks for your time, it wasn't always easy for us, I've known you probably the longest in town. You know, but unfortunately, this, it's probably happening in all towns, it certainly happened in Easton where more and more the sort of the municipal machine just takes over everything. From the, from the citizens, and and some people on boards might think I'm crazy, and that's not the case, but. At least on the boards I'm on, I've seen that, and and you know, I've spoken to everybody about it, I've been trying to. At least on the boards I'm on, I've seen that, and, and you know, I've spoken to everybody about it, I've been trying to. To ebb that flow, because I don't think it's good, I think we need to stay the special town that we are, and I think the residents need to have a say. Through appointed and elected officials and through just showing up, um, but that is getting harder and harder to do, um, I hope that changes. Um, but you know what? When your most stressful thing in your life is you're volunteering, then it's time to be done, so I thank everybody. I'll see you around town and, uh, um, I bid you adieu.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay, so, um, uh, for tonight, at least I'm the Vice Chair, um, I think we'll do some reorganization, um, at the next meeting when we have some more members. Um, so. We can continue on here. We only have a couple items on the agenda, and as discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Um, we are not going to review MBTA zoning, um, since now we only have three members present, and it's, it's kind of a. Uh, a large, important process. So, right, we have up next, um, in that case, is ninety-five Highland Street, MBL Land Development. Preliminary plan presentation. Stephanie, do you see any, um?
Brian Dunn is here.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Stephanie, if you could, uh, let. Uh, Tracy Dewatt from my office into the meeting as well as. Uh, the client's attorney, Brianna Carrera.
Once everyone's here, if you could just, um. Introduce yourselves and, um, state your, you know, name and address, please.
Perfect. Okay, ready to go, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Dunn. I'm the Principal of the firm MBL Land Development and Permaning. With offices at five Bristol Drive in the town of Eastern. And with me this evening is, uh, Tracy Dewatt, who are, is our Director of Engineering. And the Attorney for the project, Brianna Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Brianna Carrer with an office at one twenty-three Broadway in town. Uh, we're here tonight on behalf of the owners of the property, Arcade Realty Trust, for the ninety-five Highland Street Preliminary Review. Um, I believe that the project engineers had submitted some preliminary plans for your review, as well as some architectural renderings. Our proposal is for a gas station with a key convenience store. Retail use, um, with a restaurant and office uses, more particularly, you can see on the plan, we're proposing a three thousand two hundred and fifty. Square foot retail convenience store and a thirteen hundred square foot restaurant with the offices that would be above on the second floor. We are within the business district, so our proposal would require a special permit from the zoning board. For a motor vehicle light service or the gas station use, and then also a site plan review with this honorable board. I believe some of the waivers potentially we would need, um, pertain to the parking space sizes. Um, in reviewing the ordinance and, well, the bylaws and the, uh, regulations. I believe the town of Eastern looks for a ten foot by twenty foot space, we're seeking, um, if the board's amenable. To have nine feet by eighteen feet for the spaces, um, and we'd also like to have a discussion with the board in terms of open space. Um, just to see what the board would like to see here for this type of site for open space, um, just your guidance with that. Um, but as, again, as I mentioned, we're here for a preliminary review, we'd be happy, um, to have your feedback and your guidance with this proposal. And the proposed uses that we have, and I'd like to turn it over to Brian and Tracy. If they would like to walk through the plan that they've developed for this site, um, just in a little bit more detail.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Brianna. I did share the plan, can everybody see that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board?
Yes.
Alright, so. So to the east of the frontage, uh, and we have frontage on Highland Street as well as Foundry Street. The exact physical dress, address is ninety-five Highland Street. And there's an existing convenience store on this property at this signalized intersection. As you can see, um. Down inside the, oops. Don't know why I did that.
Oh, naturally, that was pretty good, we zoomed right into the intersection now, so.
Yeah, so you can see the intersection, as you can see, we surveyed the, uh. The whole intersection where the signals are and the pavement markings and so on and so forth. And then, um. We also did a, a survey of the site. Get myself out of the way. So you can. You know, get a good idea of where the existing, where the existing building is on the site. And, um. Uh, with, there's a bunch of parking in this area, in this area here, to gain access, there's a. Um, a single re- single home residency a- also attached. Uh, to this, to this building. So what we're trying to do is. Put in a, a gas station retail store. Roughly three thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. A small little restaurant, you know, maybe a subway or a sandwich shop or a coffee shop, no drive-through. And then office space on the second floor, you can see, uh, the gas tanks in this area here. Actually, whether you fill, fill up. And then we put the underground tanks in this area here of the site. We do, we did, uh, some test pits over here, where we were thinking of putting the septic system. But the soils didn't come back very good, uh, near the existing field, it's like in this area here. So it looks like we're gonna be putting the septic system on this side of the lot. Based on the soils and groundwater. Uh, we also did test pits for our proposed drainage areas, you can see those test pits as well. And, uh, Stephanie was kind enough to get us some information on this. Uh, abandonment area of the. Of the right of way, so now this whole area here is part of our site that's in this area. So, so we'll be utilizing, um, you know, that area for landscaping and maybe some drainage, we're, we're still looking at that.
Yeah, so is that where people, is that part like, where people like, currently kind of park sometimes if they kind of pull in and pull after the side?
That is correct. And then there's, there's also an existing catch base in this area that's connected. Uh, probably, uh, either this way or this way, it was very hard to find it out in the field. Uh, but there is an easement in this area for that, that catch basin. That will ultimately show on the existing condition survey plan. So what we tried to do here is keep the gas station and the proposed. Use for the gas station out of this aquifer protection district, you can see, everything is, is pretty much. Uh, to the east of that zone. And we're trying to put our drainage area, you know, in this area here, in the back of the site, we also did test pits in that area too. We're closing a quite a large curb cut. I, I forget what the distance is, but we've got this huge curb cut here, and actually a huge curb cut from here all the way to past. Uh, I think it's really over in here, it stopped somewhere in that vicinity. So we're, we're trying to do some. You know, reduction in the curb cuts and do some really good planning about. Making sure the throat width is the right, the right width for this use, and also putting them. On either sides of the, of the lot in the right of ways. So they're not very close together, I think we did some distance checking and. I think Tracy came up with, we're just over three hundred feet apart. Which is pretty ideal. So. We do have handicapped spaces in this area here, sidewalk landscaping around the building. And, um. You know, some concrete sidewalks in the front for the entrances, this is the concrete sidewalk. And I also, uh, we also submitted for your review, we tried to think. About the, the residential use of this area, because we are surrounded by residents. Except, uh, except for the wooded area up here, and, um, the northeast, Eastern Savings Bank. That's, uh, to the north on Foundry Street. So most of the abutters around us are residents. So if I could, I'm gonna just, uh, minimize this for a second, Mr. Chairman. And then, um. I wanna make sure, I'm gonna stop sharing and then share again, so you can see the architecturals, hold on a second. So we tried to come up with a, an architectural design, I'm gonna give you the, I'm giving, giving you the rendering first. So it's not the typical, everybody can see that?
Yes.
So it's really not the typical, I'm gonna try to zoom in just a little bit. Is that a little bit clearer to everybody?
That's good.
Great. So it's not your typical, you know, mobile. Hess or, you know, Cumberland Farms type of a canopy, it's a canopy with, you know, some faux. Uh, dormers on it, dormers on the building itself. Uh, that would be part of the office. Um. Office area on the second floor, you can see the three pumps that we're planning on. On, uh, proposing underneath the canopy, you know, the canopy is, was probably gonna be as high as fourteen six. Or fourteen eight, uh, we're working with the architect and a gas station, uh, designer. Uh, GPI who, uh, does these types of things all the time for Cumberland Farms. And they've put, give, given us some input to, uh, the heights of things and circulation and placement of tanks. And so on and so forth. But what we're really here today is to try to get some input from you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. In regards to our, our layout, um, as well as the, you know, proposed architectural. Style and design of this, this building. Which, you know, kind of looks very colonial to me. And I think would probably fit very well in the neighborhood. And not be your typical, you know, Cumberland Farms or Speedway or a Hess gas station, where it's just a commercial building. And this looks, you know, very residential to me, but that's why we're here. We did meet with Stephanie, she gave us some great advice in regards to, you know, laying out the site. As well as, you know, coming up with some of these architectural designs and, and really put forward coming here. And trying to present this at an early stage, so we could get the input. And then go to final design and come back and, uh, you know, hopefully suc- uh, successfully. Get a site plan approval from you. Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, um. Rob and, uh, Mickey, do you have any comments, uh, suggestions for? These people?
Not necessarily on the, the drawing part, but in terms of the use, what, what are you guys thinking? Can fit inside of like a thirteen hundred square foot? Um, restaurant space, can you just give some examples, just?
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I said earlier, it could be a coffee shop, it could be a small little subway. Uh, could be someone who wants to sell pastries or, or donuts or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's.
Scale.
Very small scale, maybe, maybe eight seats, something like that. Something very, ve- very, very small. So, um, that was, that was the intent, the rest of the area, the thirty-two hundred and fifty. Of course, is, you know, gonna be a, a regular convenience store with, with soda and, you know, snacks and things like that. Um, kind of like what they're selling right now.
Now, right, okay.
Yes.
Um, i- i- and the only, the only comment I had, and just, this is kind of a first blush in, impression, the. The canopy above, um. The, uh, the gas, um. Dispensers, whatever they're called, um, it just sort of looks bulky to me, and I'm not the, I'm not an architect on, on this. On this board, um, but that's just something, I was just kind of curious as to. Why you went in, in that direction in terms of the size and, and the shape of it.
So the, the reasoning for this is that the client, um, has. Has built and is operating one of these in New Hampshire, like, just like this.
Yes.
So. So this is a pre-existing design that they were comfortable with and had seen.
They, they gave it, yeah, they gave us some preliminary drawings that they used for the construction of a building. Up, and I think it was Nashua, New Hampshire, and with, it's very successful. And it has that, you know, colonial look to it, yes, it looks a little large on this view. Um, you know, compared to the, to the building, but that's, that's the roof line. I mean, we can talk to the architect and see if there's a way of, you know, making it smaller. Um, but, but we're also, you know, at a very preliminary stage right now, so your input. We can go back to the owners, we can go back to the architect. And, and come up with some, something that's, uh, more palatable to you and, in regards to its bulkiness.
Yeah, I guess, I just wanted to make sure that it, what, you know, there wasn't something structurally that required this design like that, if you're telling me that. You guys can work on that and maybe make it a little more aesthetically pleasing, then I think that's good enough for my purposes tonight.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that as well, that would just seem like that kind of jumped out where I was right, yeah. And I, I'm not an architect either, but, uh, so. Neither Robert nor I, architects, we both noticed that, uh. So I guess, like, you were saying, so the parking circulation is about the same, except for the entrances are smaller and located a little more.
Yeah, if, if you'd like, I can go back to that, that plan.
No, I mean, I think that made sense to me, I think, you know, when we looked at this, I don't know if it was, was it with you, your group or someone else where, um, there was, had been a gas station? Maybe suggested for this location?
There was, um, they were proposing, the existing operation was proposing adding diesel. Diesel, uh, tanks and. Pumps.
It didn't seem like as comprehensive as a kind of a, a, a plan, or, or.
It, it, I think it only contemplated adding those additional pumps.
Right. Mm-hmm.
I think it required variances as well for a can, the canopy that they were trying to propose to, if I'm. Um, not incorrect, I think I want to, in reviews, reviewing the past decision, there were some variances involved, I want to say, ma- maybe with setbacks. Because of the canopy that was being proposed for those pumps.
Yeah, that, that, that is correct, what Brianna was saying, that the, uh, other application that was, was denied. Uh, was asking for building setback relief as well, and putting the building very, very close to Foundry. And Highland Street, and as you can see on our site plans, we're well within the, the setbacks. Of, of the, of the area, because we've got frontage on two streets. We've set, set that up, we've discussed that with Stephanie, we've discussed that with Kevin, the building inspector, so we, we feel that we're comfortable. On how we've made the determination of the setbacks, as well as placement of the building on the lot. And, and building the building or showing the building. Uh, within those setbacks and not asking for any, any waivers from those kinds of things, we, like Brianna did say early on. We might ask for a waiver on the parking spaces and some of the open space requirements. So we would like to see and hear from the board, if those are something that you'd be willing to, to work with us on. And if yes, then that's great, if not, then we know we have to go, you know, kind of like back to the planning, planning stages of laying things out.
And just to comment and, um, clarify, so we actually meet the number of parking spaces that would be required. Um, it's just the size of each parking space that, uh, we were proposing, the nine by eighteen as opposed to the ten by twenty.
Correct, thank you, Brianna.
Yeah, we, we haven't really, um. Gone to the nine foot spaces, but we have reduced parking, um. You know, we do that quite frequently.
Okay.
Right, and in light of the fact that you are kind of keeping the other side, allow with some sort of open space concept, you know, that might, um. Be a practice we could continue as long as it made sense to like that, you know, the actual use as far as, you know, reducing the actual number of parking spots.
Okay.
What do you think, Stephanie, just based on those uses and the, uh?
I, yeah, um, I, I have other comments too, I think that we need to understand. Um, they're, they're proposing, um. Residential, right?
No, we removed the residential.
You removed the residential, okay.
At, at, at our last meeting in regards to, um.
Concerns, uh.
Concerns by the, by the town.
Yeah.
We, 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 we removed the residential component totally.
Okay, so that was one of my comments.
On the second floor.
So the, so there's an office, so there aren't as many uses, so you have the, the proposed restaurant. The office space and then the, um. The gas station, the filling station, um, my, my one concerning question that I had raised. When I met with, I mean, in addition to that one, about apartments being, you know, right next to a gas station with, you know. Those fumes and things, um. It, but also is the traffic coming in and out? Remind me, um, Brian, will. Remind me, um, Brian, will, are they going to have diesel?
Yes, there will be regular gas. There will be the three types of gas. Um, uh, economy, mid-level, premium, and there will be uh, one, uh, uh, there will be diesel as well. And so the new, the new pumps that are set up, we were told. Um, that they all will, we have the ability to have diesel at, at those locations. So. Um, in regards to traffic, if traffic is a concern, uh, and. Uh, we can actually talk to the client about, you know, discussing what type of traffic study needs to be done. In regards to this type of use here.
Yeah, I think that the, both the traffic flow through the site and interacting with the office traffic, I mean. You want, we wanna make sure that everyone's safe who is using the site. You are talking about open space and you have drainage basins proposed. You're not proposing these as. Rain gardens or um, a constructed wetland. I know you're, this is still very preliminary. But um, it would, it would be nice to see some vegetation and, and some landscaping. Around the area. And I think. That you might be proposing that, um, yeah, you have proposed landscaping in that area that has been disused by the town.
Yep. So I mean, we, normally we come up with a, a very extensive landscaping plan. Uh, with trees, bushes and shrubs and grasses and lawns.
Mm-hmm.
So we can al- also look at seeing if that basin to the west of the building in the Aqua Fur Protection. Uh, can serve as a constructed wetlands or not and see if that type of a design is.
Right.
Is, is, you know, is doable in that area. Like, like we said, is, we're very, very preliminary here right now. So we, we, we have the, the ability not to erase and go back, but we have the ability. To think, plan, and then come up with some good ideas is um. That will help out with these kinds of things and then do the plug and play and see if they work. If there's reasons that they don't work. We will tell you why they, they don't work.
Yeah. So, so Peter, to answer your question about potentially reducing the parking, you know, that's one of my pet. Things to do. So if we could reduce. The park, some of the parking along the, that corner of Foundry and Highland Street. I, I think we should explore, the board should explore doing that.
Yeah, and maybe just to kinda help it look a little bit better in the neighborhood, you know, could, maybe it makes like a nice sort of. Like post rail fence along the, the front or just things like that.
Yeah. It also would improve your ability, you know, you could probably keep your um. Customers that are just coming in to use the filling station, you could circulate them just in that area. Instead of around too. So just a thought here.
Okay, um, anyone else? Any other comments from the board? Are there any, do we have any hands, hands raised?
I don't see any hands up. Uh, Mister Carister just raised his hand.
Okay.
Hi, Dale Carister, twenty-one South Street. I may be unfamiliar with the nomenclature, but to the extent that signalized was referring. To a traffic signal and to the extent that the reference was to the Highland and uh, intersection there. Um, there had been a temporary traffic light. I don't believe there is a traffic light there now. I think that was part of the detour. Uh, so I just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Yeah, that thanks. That was my reflection as well. And I figured we'd talk about that at the next meeting, but good point. Um, yeah, so that kinda just comes down to the peril traffic situation where, you know, there will be some traffic studies required and. Um, based on the results of the traffic studies, then um. We'll do, do our own plug and play there and um, you know, see what we can do to make a good project.
Good. I like the, what are you thinking?
Anyone else? Um, so Stephanie, we don't really continue this. We just um.
So let's see, the next meeting.
If, if I may, Mister Chairman, I, I wanted to ask, uh, if uh, Tracy had anything to add.
Oh, yeah. Tracy, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add at the moment. We're gonna take these um, notes from this meeting and integrate it into our design. Um. Just wanna point out, we have done some test pits with board health already, so that's underway and we've done some drainage test pits as well. So we just gotta start. Plug and chug and getting to the vine.
Okay, so I mean, we can continue this if you think you might wanna come back with some, with anything before your actual. Um, you know, submittals, what? How do you feel? You wanna handle this?
I, I, I think, Mister Chairman, I think we have enough information right now uh, to discuss with our team and our client. And um, you know, forge forward with uh, full site, set of site plans. And um, I'm sure that you'll be pleasantly pleased with our package of information and our design. And we will take into advisement all of the items that we discussed uh, this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Bye, bye, happy then.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, let's move over to the agenda. All right, um, so as we discussed, we're going to um, postpone MB, the MBTA multifamily. By right zoning district discussion um, to the next meeting when hopefully we have. The one or two more board members in attendance. Um, so that leaves us with really one more kind of type of uh. Planning item, the, the variance, ZBA request for comment variance two thirty-five dash two. Two fifty-three Purchase Street. So this was a variance from the, some of the um, the lot requirements um, due to a kind of a historical. Um, situation on Purchase Street.
Well, Don and I will share my screen.
Not like a historical structure, but just a, you know, something that happened in the past that kind of encumbered these lots, I suppose.
Oops, sorry. So.
The letter indicate that the number two forty-nine um, was located like directly on the property line?
That's, yes. So they're proposing this new lot line.
And like the same family sort of owned these two properties and however it happened was such that. Um, two forty-nine ended up right in the property line. And so that. Which was, that's actually, oh, oh, no, neither are really conforming lots, right? And.
Correct.
Except that right now, there's only.
Well, you have um. It looks like they both have the frontage to be a conforming lot. It's probably the size. I don't see. The square, ah, here we go, thirty-two thousand three hundred. So it's the square footage. They're undersized lots. By current zoning. So. In one sense, they're making lot B less conforming. Than it currently, you know, they're increasing the non-conform and, and form.
Yeah, conform.
Performance. And they're. Reducing one aspect of the non-conformance for the exist, for lot A. So they're just kind of shifting it around.
But on the other hand, even the two lots combined are only about fifty-nine thousand.
Correct.
About fifty thousand square feet.
And when I looked at these, they're, I think they're consistent with the lots within the area. Oops, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it kinda, it's kinda like to me, like it's regardless of whether or not, or whether the two forty-nine was built right in the property line. It's more like. Okay, well, if there are substandard lots, um, then, you know. At this point where we are in zoning, you know, should we get um, our variance is appropriate to allow people to build on a substandard lot? Forgetting about the, you know, the, the lot line issue with the other lot. So um, Rob, uh, Mickey, do you have any opinion on? This variance request?
I mean, I'm in, I'm in favor of it. If it's gonna make it easier to build something there because there's. You know, this, this building is encroaching over the line. I, I think that makes sense. That's what I got from the memo. I, I mean, that, that seems to make sense to me and, and seems reasonable.
It's almost like after I read the memo, then I was like, okay, well, that's why they need a variance. Whereas before I was like, well, they're just trying to build a house on a substandard lot, right? I mean.
Yeah, it's not the most detailed of memos we've seen, but it, it, what I took away from it is that the fact that it's kinda over the line. Necessitates some sort of uh, the variance request.
Okay, for, wait, sweet, that, yeah, right. So then in my mind, that would be a variance for the two forty-nine on the left. But is the variance just for two forty-nine or is it also to allow lot B to be a buildable lot without um, adequate? Um, area.
So, in, in essence, it is to allow both lots. Um, it's a variance for both lots because if this is, this is in common ownership. Then it's considered one lot.
Oh, the merger doctrine.
Murder.
So, and uh, Mickey, we don't. Yeah, oh, I, I explained to Mickey that we don't, we don't make a decision. We just kinda, this is for the Board of Appeals to decide. We just make a recommendation. You know, yes, no, or no comment. So it's not. Um, like this is right, it's not really our thing. It's the Board of Appeals thing, but we do just make a comment if we choose.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
It seems in character. Yeah, I'm, I'm for it. I'll make a, make a motion to recommend Stetson.
Second, Wolf.
All in favor? DeShane, aye? Stetson?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Okay, uh, oh, sorry, that was not a, that was more of a motion to recommend, right? So we did that, right? Okay. Nice work. And do we have some um, meeting minutes? You know? I did not get to that point of the folder, but we can, um, does anyone else, you wanna look at them or did anyone read the minutes and um, have any issues with them?
Well, I skimmed them. I thought they looked fine. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Stetson.
Second, Wolf.
All in favor? Um, DeShane, aye? Wolf?
Aye.
Stetson?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. The minutes are approved. And back to the agenda. I think that's, let's see. And I guess the acting chair um, recap there is that our long-term um, long-term member, planning board member. And uh, Chair Greg Strange has resigned. So right now, Stephanie, we have, we only have uh, four members, right? And then I assume the. It's the time of year when the board of selectmen um, appoints. Uh, any, any vacancies in around in June?
Well, right now you have five members with. Well, right, and um, Mickey's currently the alternate.
Mm-hmm.
So, right, there was a vacancy filled.
As of now, we're only down by, right, yeah. We're only down by one because then we have five for, you know, for our regular meetings. All right, and um, and I think what we talked about, unless you have any other ideas, will we?
I.
Reorganize at the next meeting, assuming we have a, really like, at least four of us or so, or, or what? Um, what's the procedure for that when? A board member resigns?
I, you should do a vote.
Mm-hmm.
Or at least an interim chair.
Mm-hmm. All right, then why don't we do, I'd say we can see who's here at the next meeting and we'll do it at the first agenda item, right? Do you have anyone else, anyone that wants to join? A chance to um, chance to attend? Um, and then, you know, Robert did a great job at that last meeting when, when, you know, I were here.
I'll, I'll be, I'll be nominating you, Peter.
You look a little more poised than the other, the emcee part of it, but I don't know, right? Well, anyways, uh, that's, that's all for a chair update. We're gonna address the board leadership at the next meeting. Um, so with that, um, Stephanie, have other planning director updates?
I do have an update. I just wanted to let the board know. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that an enforcement. Um, notice was issued for the lot eleven at Weber Farm. Um, being out of compliance and needing to be brought into compliance late last week. Um, we were made aware that the. Um, developer is going in and appears to be bringing it into compliance. The siding material is being removed. Uh, the garage doors have been removed, so. Um, we're keeping an eye on that, but it looks like that um, is moving forward in the right direction.
That's good news.
Yeah, yep, I think they did it. I caught a little bit of that when I was watching the um, the other parts of the meeting that I missed and it seemed like it went.
Um, oh, okay, never mind.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I, um, someone had their hand raised and they just disappeared. So.
That case, all right, um, it's the time of night when we resign, unless anyone else has anything else to bring up.
Motion to adjourn. Stetson?
Second, Wolf.
Uh, in favor? Stetson?
Aye.
Mickey?
Aye.
Uh, Wolf, sorry. Um, DeShane, aye? All right, thanks, guys. Goodbye.
All right, I have one last question before we go. Peter, um, can you see the other participants? I do, I'm not sure. I think we make Greg a co-host and that's why he can see, but I just wanna make sure we have it all set up for the next meeting.
Oh, can I see the participants? Well, I can see them. Let's see if I can like, I don't know, Joe's here. Let's see if I can.
So you could, could you see if, when people raise their hands?
Oh, yeah, I can see when they raise their hand, but if anything went wrong with your um, Zoom, I wouldn't have the control to promote them and things like that. So.
Right.
Oh, right.
Right, so I'll see if we can, we can change that. We had tried that with Greg and it just didn't work one time, but. Can do that because, yep, okay.
All right.
That was it.
See you guys.
Good night, everybody.